Good evening, everybody. I'm Michael Gallup, President and CEO of the Rowlett Chamber Commerce. And I want to thank you first for tuning in tonight and watching this debate for City Council Place One here in Rowlett. I want to thank a couple of other people. Obviously, I want to thank Blake for attending. I want to thank Drew Rist with the City of Rowlett for handling our audio visual. And I want to thank former State Representative Cindy Burkett for moderating for us tonight. And I want to thank you again also, for those of you who sent questions in. That was very important to us, and I appreciate you sending those questions in this week. Before I turn this over to Cindy to moderate, she's going to explain the rules. And before I begin, though, I want to mention that, as you can see, we only have one candidate here tonight. Both candidates were invited, and we heard from one right away that he would be attending. The other candidate replied that she was considering attending, and we received no further communication from her after that. So we believe it's important to give the candidates a fair chance, whether they attend or not. They had the opportunity, and we believe that it's important for us to move forward with this event tonight. So we're going to do that. And there are questions that were sent in for both candidates. I'm leaving it up to Cindy which questions she asks. If she wants to ask questions that were for the other candidate, that's entirely up to her. If not, then we'll hear from Blake tonight, and we're going to move forward. So Cindy, Cindy, with that, I'm going to turn it over to you. Thanks.
Thank you, Michael. I tell you, I'm really excited to be here. Mike has asked me to do this before, and I really enjoy being on this side of a debate or a forum. And I just wanted to let y'all know, I think that candidate forms are so extremely important because you get to hear from the people that are wanting to have the job of representing you. And it's important that you hear from their mouths and their thoughts directly. So Blake, thank you for coming. I'm really excited to be able to do this. I'm going to read our rules real quickly. However, they're probably altered a little bit. Each candidate will be allowed two minutes for an opening statement, so Blake, you'll open with that. We're going to have a coin toss, but you'll get to go first. You get your opening statement, and then we're going to have questions that we're going to ask. You'll have two minutes to answer the question. And then I get to ask more questions if I see it appropriate. So be ready for grilling. But Blake, if you want to start with a two-minute opening, that would be a good way to start.
Well, thank you. I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this event and to Cindy Burkett for moderating. I also want to thank you, the viewer, for being interested and learning about the candidates. You know, I'm, you know, it's disappointed that my opponent chose not to show, but I'm happy to be here to answer questions and speak to the issues.
Okay, is that your opening?
Yes.
Okay. Again, as Michael had pointed out, all these questions came from you, the viewers, you, the constituents, the people that Blake would be representing. So if they, if you're wondering where they come from and how can they kind of hop from one subject matter to another, that's where we got them. So let's look at, let's look at this one. "It is estimated that the city will have just under $40 million in bonding capacity for the potential May 2021 election without having to raise the tax rate." So also, over $350 million in needed projects have already been identified, which you're probably aware of. Infrastructure has and continues to be an important concern for Rowlett, which is the same for most communities in the county, for that matter. Could you, Blake, tell me how you propose we make headway on solving our infrastructure needs when the actual tax rate has been decreased three of the last four years?
Right. So I appreciate that question. It's a good question. Yes, we do have only $40 million in capacity for the, if we were to do a bond in 2021. And yes, we do have $350 million in needs. So our needs do outweigh our resources. With that, you have to be creative in how you invest those dollars and what's the most critical piece of infrastructure that we need to address. So the other question was about the, reducing the property tax rate for the last four, three to four years. So yes, we reduced the property tax rate. However, we're still making more revenue due to new growth. So we're not, we're not decreasing the budget. Our budget is still increasing, but we're reducing some of that burden from the, from the property tax owner. So again, we just have to be creative in the way that we invest the $40 million if we decide to go through with a bond. I won't be a proponent for increasing the tax rate to have a bigger bond. I think that a focus of council should be to, during the budget sessions, to see what we can do to decrease the property tax rate, but still balance the needs that we have as well, so.
Okay. So the 350 in needs was what y'all discussed at the budget meetings that you've had over the last few months?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then 40 in bonds. Do you recall what your actual line item is for infrastructure right now at this point?
Line item, so-
In the budget?
In the budget. The, so we do actually allocate quite a bit of dollars in, through the general fund, not, not through bond, but to the general fund to infrastructure. In fact, Rowlett invests more in general fund dollars to infrastructure than most cities. So continuing that practice is important.
That's great. That's great. Okay. So you mentioned that the, that the, some of the money is not, is going to be coming from growth in the city. Now, I'm assuming you're talking about residential growth because I know that Rowlett has increased their, their capacity at a really a large rate.
Yes.
So what do you look at as far as being able to expand retail business in Rowlett so that we can have more of those dollars coming from businesses versus homeowners? And then the question in particular says, "Expanding retail business in Rowlett past liquor stores and nail shops." So I'm assuming that a lot of liquor stores and nail shops have opened in Rowlett. So what do you look at as far as attracting other businesses in the city as well?
Right. Well, first with the liquor stores and nail salons. We don't have that power as a city to limit those kinds of businesses. But with, but with attracting further commercial development in the city is absolutely critical. And that's why we have an Economic Development Department. That's why we have to, again, be creative in how we invest those dollars to get the biggest return of investment. Again, it's going to take creativity. We have to put more money into advertisement, reaching out to brokers, and having a good, tight-knit business community connections around the region.
Okay. So what would you consider having, this is for your second term that you're running, Blake?
Yes.
Remind me, please. Okay. So what do you see for your second term? How you would, what would be your top priorities as for the community's economic, health, business, that kind of thing? What, to you, are the most priorities that you're going to really be pushing for and working towards? Not that they're all not important.
Right.
But yes, the ones you would lock-
So I can think of like the top three for me would be, number one, public safety. We have a lot of needs in public safety. You know, the city over the last three years has invested a lot of dollars, additional dollars into public safety, hired, I think, 11 new police officers. This year, we're able to actually hire nine new firefighters through a SAFER grant. So it's 100% paid for through FEMA. The other one is probably the water district. As, as most of you know, we're dealing with some pretty significant water, water costs in the region. And partly due to that is the current practice of take-or-pay within the contract with the North Texas Municipal Water District. And so that is something that I think we have to focus more attention on. We've been doing, we've actually put a lot of focus on that over the last year, getting involved in some legal processes. So continuing that is going to be important. The next one would be property tax rate. Again, we have to continue to keep in mind when we go into the budgeting process to think about how we can alleviate some of the burden off of the property tax owners in the city while balancing the needs that we have as well.
Okay. And you mentioned public safety is your first point, and I applaud that. I appreciate that. So what are your thoughts on, I know some of the other municipalities in the area and without the state as well are defunding their police or cutting back? Has that been anything that's been discussed?
No, and that's not going to happen here. I wouldn't advocate for that at all.
Good. Glad to hear that. Okay, so continuing on business, in case you notice, we have a theme here. We're talking about businesses right now. So what do you think are the most important issues that businesses are facing in the city of Rowlett right now?
Well, I think the obvious one is the current pandemic that we're, that we're being faced with. You know, in the beginning of the pandemic, I started getting messages from some business owners saying, you know, is the city doing anything to help offset some of the challenges that, you know, they were facing, not having customers? And we've had a few businesses actually shut down due to the coronavirus pandemic, which is very unfortunate. That kind of tugged at my heart, getting, you know, hearing from those business owners asking, you know, going as far to ask the city, what, is there anything we can do? So I got together with some colleagues, actually including Councilmember Lanning and Chamber of Commerce President Michael Gallup's. And we worked together on initiating a Rowlett Business Stimulus Grant. And we're, it's, actually, we're still helping businesses out that need the help, that qualify for the grant. And so that, that's been very important to me personally, that we take care of our small business community the best that we can.
Yeah. And I appreciate that. And in full disclosure, I happen to be on that committee.
Yes.
And we have been looking through lots of applications. I don't know, are there any other cities that you're aware of in the area that are, that is doing something similar?
I think there are quite a few. I think Garland's one of them. I can't think of any others at this time, but I know there, I've heard of other cities doing, doing something similar.
Well, I applaud, I applaud Rowlett for doing that, and I'm especially pleased that you're the one that came up with that idea. And I've been really privileged to work on that, that issue. So let's see, what is the, what is the city's role in growing the economy? And how can the city best attract businesses to Rowlett while supporting existing businesses that are already here?
Well, you know, the city actually relies a lot on the Chamber for business retention, and they do an excellent job in helping, having, make connections within the business community because that's really where what's important in terms of retention is having those relationships. So the Chamber does, helps us out a lot with that. Now, attracting new development is, has always been a challenge for us. You know, we're limited within our economic development budget through the incentive fund. We currently get about $100,000 or so dollars each year to add to that fund. But it's very minimal to be able to have a big impact, to attract big corporations because a lot of those big businesses that bring a lot of jobs require, you know, not require, but they ask for a lot of money through tax abatements, through cash upfront. And so we have to, again, in Rowlett, we have to be very creative. Actually, for 2020, we've actually had quite a bit of interest, new interest in our opportunity area, the North Shore. And I would say that's part and due to a consultant that we hired that is just focusing on advertising the North Shore and communicating with the brokerage community. And so, you know, whatever we're doing in that area, we need to continue doing it because it's actually, it seems to have been working. So again, it takes creativity in the economic development field.
It does. You're right. You have a lot of competition from the other cities as well.
Yes.
Yeah. You talked about North Shore. Let's look at Sapphire Bay, the Sapphire Bay Development. Here's a question from one of the voters that says, "Do you have a plan to ensure that people with disabilities have equal access to all amenities at Sapphire Bay Development that's going to be located on the shores of Lake Ray Hubbard?"
That's a good question. There's currently standards for every new development to have access for people who are disabled. So I would expect, and I know that the Rowlett Community Development Department is going to make sure that there is as much accessibility as possible per the law. So I would obviously advocate that, that we take care of that area and make sure that it is accessible to all people.
I applaud that. I applaud that. Let's look at affordable housing. So how would you specifically provide affordable housing, which is so needed in our community for working, for working-class families that are not priced out of the market for buying a home?
Good question. Affordable housing is actually, first, it's a hot-button issue for many people. And I definitely see a need for affordable housing in this community where it, where it fits. It has to be in the right area that's not going to disturb people or add to traffic issues, and it's not taking up commercial opportunity land. We currently have a couple affordable housing developments that are in construction right now, actually. That's, one of them was off of Rowlett Road in Kyle, and the other is an independent senior living facility that's currently located at Chisa and 66. So those are, I think, the first two affordable housing projects in the city.
Okay. And do you see, do you anticipate that either one of those projects will put strains on infrastructure as far as roads or schools?
No, not where they're located. I don't, I don't see that at this point.
Sounds good. This is similar, but let's do, let's do this anyway. "Should the city increase its efforts to provide housing that is affordable to the working, working middle class?" I don't know if this particular voter means single-family homes, but let's assume that. And please explain your answer.
Well, if it's pertaining to single-family homes, absolutely. I think there's opportunity there. I would, I would advocate for that. There's been some new development with single-family by a builder who's building a little bit more affordable homes on smaller lots for starter families. So I've supported those efforts, that we provide some housing for starter families on small lots, people who don't want to have a big yard and have to mow a big lawn. So, I mean-
You know what? There's some seniors that might appreciate that as well.
Yes, yes.
Okay. I've got a question that's specifically here for you, so let me flip my page here. "It is estimated that the city will have," I've already asked you that. I apologize when I flip to the next page.
I'll answer it again.
It's about the bonding capacity. You did a good job answering it. Okay. Here's a question that was really geared for both you and Cindy, but it does have you in here as well. So Cindy is advocating one-member districts. Do you support single-member districts and why or why not? And if so, what would it mean to you?
Well, I would support single-member districts when we get near 100,000 in population. At this point, I personally don't see a need for single, single-member districts with the population that we have. You know, you have seven people to choose from. If you, if you want assistance or have a question or have a concern, you can reach out to me. I'm very accessible. My phone number's online. My, my email's out there. I respond to citizens all the time. And I know my other colleagues do as well. And so we're, we're here to serve you. That's our job.
Okay. So follow-up question, why 100,000? Why did you pick that?
Well, it's just, at the, at the current, at the current population we have, I just don't foresee a need for single-member districts at this point in time. I think that maybe when we get near 100,000, maybe we will see a need when we're bigger and we have more operational challenges and more population in certain areas of the city. So at this point, personal opinion, I just don't foresee a need right now.
For the 100,000. Okay. And for our viewers that are watching online, could you explain how it's currently set up that's not the single member? So some people may not even be aware.
Right. That's, that's a good point. So we're currently at-large, so we all serve every part of the city. So there's no, we're not, we're not split into districts. So if you live in the southwest part of the city, there, you still, you still have access to all seven of us on council.
And how many are running this, this time around?
Well, currently, there was, on council?
Well, that are, yes, for the city council.
Okay. So the only ones that are opposed is me. And then you have Pam, Councilmember Pam Bell, and Councilmember Matt Grubasich, who were up, but they're not opposed.
They're unopposed. So, and again, for the education of our viewers online, so if all three of y'all were running and you all had opposed campaigns, is it top vote getter? Or each, each campaign counts? So I guess it must just be each campaign because the other two are not on there. Because I know there's another, another city where it's the top vote, vote getter for all the races. It's kind of a wild run when you go that way. Okay, let's see. Here's a good one. "Recently, the city council passed a 2021 budget that included no pay raises for any employee. It also denied step increases for employees who are supposed to receive those. Why would you agree to a budget that denies step increases when those are separate and different from pay raises?"
So step increases, those aren't, those aren't guaran, those aren't guaranteed, to my knowledge. It's whenever we have the budget capacity to provide that. And we're actually, the council's going back in January, after we've been through a little bit more of this pandemic, to see how we're going to fare with this new budget and see if there's opportunities like that, to be able to invest in, in step increases or raises. I personally, if we continue on the, on the path that we're going right now, which is, we're actually, the city's not really feeling the pains of the pandemic. In fact, we're doing better budgetarily even pre-COVID.
Really?
So if we continue down that path and we don't experience difficulties or restraints in the budget due to, you know, property tax revenue not coming in or sales tax revenue declining, if, if, if we continue on the path that we're going, then I would advocate for looking at raises and step increases, absolutely. Because I think we are behind in certain jobs when it comes to competition with other cities around here. So police needs raises to be able to compete. Fire needs raises. But it's very, very expensive to do that. And, but I'll always advocate for those increases if we have the capacity to do that.
It can also be very expensive to retrain now as well.
Exactly. That's a, that's a great point. If we lose someone because they go to a different city because of competition, it's going to cost us a lot more to retrain somebody.
And it gets expensive to train here and have them move on.
Exactly, yes.
Exactly. And plus, you, you miss that continuity of keeping the employee. So one follow-up question, you'd mentioned that sales tax revenue, in spite of COVID, is at or near what it's been in the past? Did I understand that correctly?
Sales tax revenue is currently 7.6% above forecast.
Really?
So, and that was the numbers that I got yesterday.
And was that taking into account COVID losses or just above what it was last year?
It was above, actually, I think it was above what it was last year. So we're, we're faring pretty, pretty good at this point.
That's good to hear. Okay. I think we kind of covered this one. That's okay. So are we done? I think we kind of covered this one already, but it says, this is a question for you. "Describe the development incentives that you have supported in your first time on city council and explain why." As there are several, you may focus on two or three of the largest. So I'm assuming that's development incentives. I don't know if that means for buildings? I mean, for commercial or for developments as far as housing developments?
Well, we don't really give, at least in my time on council, we don't give incentives to residential. We don't really deal with incentives that often, but I can think of a couple. One would be Sapphire Bay, of course. That's a big one. And it's really through the tax increment reinvestment zone. So anything, any roads that they build, they're reimbursed for that after. And a real incentive would probably be a property that was in downtown that a developer wanted to build a mixed-use, or I think it was, it was retail and restaurant uses. And unfortunately, that fell through, and the city withdrew its incentive for that development. We have actually withdrew a couple incentives, including Terolago as well, which was a multifamily development. And that incentive was put in place, I think, in 2015. And they did not perform after giving them plenty of warning, so we withdrew, so.
So it's kind of like a clawback?
Right. Well, you know, my point in saying that is we, we hold developers accountable. If, if they don't meet their performance criteria, then they lose their incentive.
And that's appropriate?
Yes.
It's appropriate. They should do what they promised because you're, you're representing the city and the citizens.
And we're investing tax dollars into it, people's, people's money.
That's exactly right.
So we want it to be successful.
That's exactly right. I think that's, I think that's good. Let's see, what else do we have here? "What would you do to ensure the needs of the underrepresented, underrepresented in Rowlett are being addressed?"
Underrepresent, okay. So, so actually, our mayor created a diversity commission, and that has actually been very successful. They've hosted several events through their time that they've been created. We had one last weekend, the Diversity Day in downtown Rowlett. It was, I think it was very successful. We had food trucks. We had a stage and concert. And it brought people together of all kinds, and we could all be neighbors and enjoy each other's presence and just have a great time. And I think doing more of that, bringing the community together, everybody is going, is beneficial to the city.
Okay. This is under the platform of general, but let's go ahead and try it. Let's see, "Please give specific examples of your service to your community outside of what you've done with the council."
Outside what I've done with the council, service to the community would be, well, I was appointed to the Parks Advisory Board when I was 15 years old as a junior member. I assisted in the Rebuild Rowlett, or Rebuild Kids Kingdom, I apologize for that, and assisted that committee. I also volunteered to, I actually ran a scanner page on Facebook, social media, that would inform the residents of Rowlett of emergency events, big emergencies, and would keep the citizens informed on those issues. So I would say that I have had some involvement in the city before council.
So was that scanned before or after the tornado hit?
That was before and after.
Wow.
So that was actually a crazy night, as, as it was for me.
I recall you.
But yes, I, I, that was a, those were some good times. I missed that, so.
With the scanning?
Yes, it was so fun.
You can still do that.
No, it's encrypted.
Oh, well. Let's see. Here's a general question. "Please give two examples of two key issues facing our community and how you specifically contributed to solve, how you will specifically contribute to solve for those issues."
Can you say that again?
Yeah. "Please give two key issues facing our community and how you specifically look to solve those issues." We kind of talked about business.
Right.
And our first question, I'd ask you about what you saw were some important issues to you. And so this may be kind of a duplicate, so forgive me if that's the case.
Well, but, but there's one thing. One thing that I've been working on with our Community Development Director, Manal Maladad, who's excellent, is overlay zones. And overlay zones, if you don't know, is, so it goes into opportunity areas for cities. So for example, Rowlett has North Shore. That's one of our opportunity areas. And North Shore is about 1,000 acres of open commercial land. Overlay zone is a zoning that applies over a base zoning. So let's say, for example, your property is zoned single-family. The city can come in and say, "Well, to meet the form-based, or to meet the comprehensive plan, we're going to apply this overlay zone that is specific and allows some consistency." For example, we've had a couple multifamily, or actually, one multifamily development go in, in the North Shore because it met the zoning. They did not have to come before council to get approval for that development.
Because of the overlay, then?
No, because of the base zoning allowed, allowed for that development. And so after that happened, after I was notified that they were going to put a multifamily there in our opportunity area, and it did not meet the comprehensive plan, I went to our Community Development Director, Manal, and asked her, "What is something that we can do to safeguard opportunity areas in our city that, that have a comprehensive plan attached to it, but that comp plan doesn't meet the zoning?" And so she, she said overlay zones. So I, so I did some research on that, and I said, "Okay, well, we need to do this." And I actually just found out last week from one of our past councilmembers saying that we actually did have overlay zones before the form-based code that we had. And so we, historically, we did have overlay zones, which is what I was told. And so I want to reimplement that into the city so that we are safeguarding commercial development, development that, that we want, that meets the comprehensive plan, and we're not having land being built, or land that's being built on by development that was not envisioned in our comprehensive plan. So it's basically safeguarding open commercial land that's spoken to in our comprehensive plan.
Right. And for the viewers at home, as non-city as you can, could you explain why we have comprehensive plans?
Sure. So a comprehensive plan is basically, what is the city, what do we think the city should look like in five years or 10 years? And so we, if there's open commercial land or there's room for redevelopment, we will look at a certain area and study that and say, here's what we, here's what we, the components we want to see. Do we want to see commercial? Do we want to see mixed use? Or is it residential? And so that, that's how the comp plan, and you can go actually and see that online at rowlett.com. It's a really thorough plan and very educating, and-
So was that comprehensive plan put in place when you were on the council or before you were on?
It was actually, we revised it in 2018, so we have a newer one that's been updated.
And were, were citizens of Rowlett able to come and speak to their concerns or what they thought should be included?
Yes. We had several forums for residents to participate. In fact, the board that implemented the comprehensive plan or revised it was a board of citizens. So we definitely wanted citizen involvement in that whole process.
Yes, their city.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. Well, along with that, Rowlett has seen so much change over the decades with incredible growth and development, as well as the addition of dark rail, dark light rail and the George Bush toll road, of course. While this provides for more opportunities for- While this provides for more opportunities for business and our residents, it can also cause dissatisfaction with residents wanting their communities to stay the way it was when they moved here. So, how do we maintain that small-town feel while building out of the commu-, I'm sorry, how do we maintain that small-town feel while, built out of the community continues for the remaining 30% of Rowlett that is underdeveloped and whose landowners have a right to develop? So you're trying to balance the, the small-town feel, the people who own property, if they want to develop it, you know, they have a right to do so, so how do you think you can keep, keep both sides happy?
So, I think that goes into our programming and events. You know, the, the feel of a community is when you're around your neighbors, and you're at an event, or you have a neighborhood block party, and that, to me, is how you feel like you're in a community, a small town, when you know people, and, and, so, investing more into our parks programs is pretty important. Unfortunately, this year with the pandemic, we've had to delay a lot of those. But, I think that's where, where we can all, you know, we all come together, and we all enjoy each other's presence, and enjoy the events that we're doing, and July 4th, or, you know, a haunted trail that we do for, for our kids, and. So I think that's how we maintain that small-town feel. Now, when it comes to future growth, we can't stop that. You know, the entire region is growing, and like you said, if, if a landowner wants to sell, they can sell, and if a developer wants to build, they can build, of course, if it means zoning. So, that's just part of the natural growth of a city, and, you know, we can't, we can't stop that from happening. So it's just, again, making sure that, that we have sustainable programming, and making sure that we're doing what we can to maintain that small-town feel that we're so good at.
Yeah, okay, and I appreciate you brought up the fact that you do a lot of, Rowlett does a lot of community-based activities. I think, I think that that is a way to bring everybody together and make Rowlett special. You mentioned the pandemic and how it's affecting that, and earlier, we talked about the pandemic committee trying to help our businesses. So, what would you, how would you address what might be ongoing issues relating to the pandemic and how it affects Rowlett?
Well, it affects a lot of areas, and, and not just for Rowlett, but for, but for everybody. Everyone's having to learn how to adapt to the changes of this unimaginable pandemic. And, so, really, it's, it's thinking about how we can implement policies that, that we can have to save, keep people safe. So, it, it goes into the social distancing, it goes into the wearing masks when, when you're in public around people. Those are just changes that, for now, we just have to adapt to where we can. It, it is kind of sad to see some of our events have to be, have to be canceled, but, again, that was just precautionary. Fortunately for Halloween, we're actually putting on a, a community event, and for Diversity Day, that was, I think, our first community event that we had.
In-person event?
In-person, that, that we were actually able to maintain the social distancing, and it's just creativity. You have to figure out how to balance the needs of, hey, we still want to have community events, but how do we stay safe while doing that?
That's true, and I think everybody's challenged with that right now. Okay, we're going to kind of look more towards politics, elections, that kind of stuff. So, what are your opinions of ranked choice voting? And would you consider bringing it up to council for a vote to implement it in future elections?
Ranked choice voting?
Yeah, I had to ask about that as well. Apparently, so it's, it's, you rank in order of preference, so versus the single city, I mean, the single districts, you would have everybody run, and then the, the choice is just made by who gets the most votes.
Well, isn't that how we do it now, I mean?
I think it would be for everybody.
Oh.
So.
Oh, okay, okay, well, I, that's my first time hearing about that, if you couldn't tell.
I had to ask as well. Saw the question, I thought, what?
I, I don't know what to think about that, that's my first time hearing about that. I would have to look into ranked choice voting and see how it worked in other areas.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, that's, well, and I, I understand why you're puzzled with that one. Okay, so how do you feel about the role partisan politics should play in local elections, as well as local decision-making? Or should partisan politics play a role in local elections?
I was just going to say, no, it shouldn't pay, play a part, it hasn't played a part in my decision-making. I, I look at things of what's going to improve the lives of the residents, I don't care what your background is, what your belief is, everyone has the right to believe what they want to believe, and it's not my job to dictate that or make decisions based off of how you believe. I'm here to serve you as a nonpartisan, unbiased councilmember, and I have to look at each individual issue as, is it, how is it going to affect you and your neighbors, each issue by issue?
Okay, so, you've served a term. So, the state of Texas Legislature has passed, passed multiple bills over the last several sessions that restrict local decisions that the city councils make. What areas are you concerned about in regards to those historical legislative actions? And what concerns do you have for the upcoming legislative session, and what they may pop, what you may hear may happen down there come this spring?
So, certainly, it, it has seemed like the legislature's been hampering down on local decision-making. You know, us councilmembers, we're, we're the closest to the community, we're the closest to you, we're more accessible, and, and we live in the community, so, so we also feel the same struggles that you feel. So it is kind of disheartening to see some of the things that have happened in the legislature. However, you know, I think something that, that they could focus on in terms of, instead of, you know, going at cities, maybe it's, when it comes to property taxes, maybe it's the appraisal district, maybe that's something that they should look at in their appraisal, and, and the property tax issues that they've been focusing on. You know, it doesn't make sense that a home is increasing by, an appraisal by 12%, 20%? No, that, you can't justify that. So maybe, maybe that's somewhere where the legislature needs to look at, instead of, you know, hampering more on cities. So, that's my initial thoughts on that issue.
Okay, so that's something the voters that are watching might want to call their legislators about?
Yes, yes.
Put it where it belongs, right? Okay, let's see, so here, here's a question, I'm not sure how this is going to apply to what you just said, but what are your thoughts or plans to lower the amount of taxes in Rowlett?
Well, I've advocated for property tax relief for citizens since I've been on this council. Over the last, like we started off with earlier, over the last three years that I've been on council, we've decreased the property tax rate by nearly three cents. And for 2020, the fiscal year 2021, we're decreasing the property tax rate by 1.2 cents. So, again, I'm always going to advocate for property tax relief and balancing the needs of the city as well.
Okay, so, and as you talk about property taxes, and I don't know how familiar you are with it, but what is your opinion about the TRE for the Garland ISD? Have you got some information on that?
I, I've just started to actually look into that to be prepared to vote in early voting, so.
Have to be informed.
Yeah, I have to be, you have to be informed when you go vote. So, you know, I really, I don't know that much about it right now, but if I did, I would still ask you to actually, and, and go do some research, and, and, you know, Garland ISD is, is, you know, probably the place where to go find that information as well. You know, a, a city and the school district are two different, separate organizations, so, you know, I'm not going to tell you how to vote on a matter with Garland ISD, that's just not, that's not my place.
Okay, okay, then additionally, while we're talking about taxes, well, this really goes into traffic, but that kind of goes hand in hand. Traffic congestion directly impacts the quality of life for the Rowlett residents. Specifically, how would you propose to reduce this congestion in light of our current state, as well as future development and limited infrastructure resources?
Well, it, it goes back into investing, figuring, being creative in the way that you invest your dollars. You know, hitting the, the, the top needs first through our, our capacity and the budget, and through the bonds. You know, again, the $40 million, it's such a small percentage compared to the massive amount of needs that we have in this community. But we have, again, creativity, and, again, we have to look at the areas that need the funding the most. So, you can't build a new road without adequate funding, and, you know, with the concrete costs going up, and the market going up the way that it's going up, it's.
And the number of people moving into the state.
It, it's just going to become more expensive, and it's going to create more challenges, but, again, it takes more creativity.
Okay, now, you touched real briefly on, on the high-water bills that Rowlett has, and I know that affects not just the city of Rowlett. Can you, here's the question, that you may have already spoke to, but what will you do as a city council member to address the high-water bills and property taxes in Rowlett? So that kind of puts them together, you have talked about the property taxes.
Yes.
Is there any more information on the water issue that you can relay?
Yeah, so, over the last 10 years, the city has paid, I want to say, oh, actually, over 16 years, the city's paid around $10 million in unused water through the take-or-pay contract with the Water District. You know, if you ask me, if I'm going to pay for something, I expect to get what I bought, right? Well, not in this case, in this case, we're having to purchase 3.2 billion gallons of water when we only use around 2 billion gallons. So, we have a problem in the contract, and that's something that this council has been very adamant about looking into and addressing. You know, one of the ways that we're doing that is dealing with some legal processes and attorneys, so, we just have to, you know, I can't go into detail on that in terms of the legal issues, but we have to continue fighting on behalf of the residents for fairer water rates, and if, you know, a different practice from the Water District, take-or-pay is just not it. Basically, what that means to educate.
Yeah.
Is, so, and back in, I think, 2011 is when the city reached its highest use capacity, 3.2 billion gallons of water was being used by the residents. And then the drought hit, and, and in the contract, it says that your highest use is what you'll continue to pay for, for the rest of the contract. So our highest use was 3.2 billion gallons. The drought hit, and everyone, of course, stopped using a lot of that water.
Were forced to.
Yeah, forced to, right? And since then, we still haven't recovered back to that 3.2 billion gallons of water. We're still about, over a billion gallons of water that we're not using, but we're purchasing. And so with that, we have to pass on the increase, not only do we have to pass on the, the, the amount of money that it costs for unused water, we have to pass on the continuous increases from the Water District for the, the rate, the, you know, a few years back, it was like 5% increases every, 10%, increases every year. So that's not very sustainable.
Okay, well, I think that I've pretty well covered all the questions, there was one more. Is, for the next three years in the city of Rowlett, what do you think's going to be probably the top issue? And I know we've covered this somewhat, your preferred issues that you think are important, but what do you think are going to be the top issue, the top issue that's going to be brought before the council, or be something that y'all may have to deal with in the next three years, through the next three years?
Oh my gosh, I see so many issues, so many things that could potentially be something that we have to look at. You know, one of the things is, we don't know how this pandemic's going to run its course. We don't know how long we're going to be dealing with this, and the challenges that we face, and whether our business community is still going to suffer, and how that's going to affect the economy. So, you know, if we have a recession, that's going to create a whole nother bag of issues for us to have to address on top of all the needs that we still have. And, I would say the, another major, not issue, but something that would have to be addressed is our operational capacity. With new development, and the fact that in 2018, the city was, that was the eighth fastest-growing city in America, that creates challenges operationally, you know, having enough firefighters, having enough police officers, having enough public work staff, across the board, you know, with Rowlett being the seventh-least city operation in North Texas. So, that's something that, you know, we're, we're going to have to deal with, with every, every budget, obviously, but we're in this kind of point where we have all this growth, but we don't have enough, we don't have enough staff to be able to continue to provide the, the quality services if we still continue growing at the pace we're growing. So, it, it's going to take creativity, it's my favorite word for the night, on how to, how to invest those dollars appropriately in different areas to, to make a positive impact on the people.
Well, I appreciate that, I have asked all the questions that were submitted by our voters that are out there tonight, and I, again, I want to thank you for being here tonight. I, I know as a former representative and gone through the campaign process, it can be pretty grueling, but I think that voters really appreciate it when you talk to them directly and answer their questions, and that's what you've done tonight, because none of these were produced, were produced or made by the chamber. These are voter, voter questions that came into them. So, final thing of the night, you're supposed to give a closing, so tell them why you're such a great guy, and why you should be the next person that fills your seat again next session.
Well, you know, I just want to say thank you to the citizens for giving me this opportunity. It's been a privilege and an honor to serve. I understand what's at stake, I understand that. Every decision that I make is impacting, you know, one person or a group of people, and I take that very seriously. And I make sure that when I have an item that comes before me, I have that as the first thought in my mind, is who, how is it going to impact somebody or a group of people? And, and again, I just want to thank you for the opportunity that you've given me, and I ask for your support, again, for reelection on November 3rd. And I, again, I want to thank the chamber, and I want to thank Cindy Burkett for moderating. It's been a great, a great event, and so I appreciate the opportunity.
Great conversation, thank you.
Thank you.